Good morning Chairman.
Good morning and welcome to the first online meeting of the Health Scrutiny Committee. This is a formal public meeting. The audio feed of this meeting is being broadcast via the County Council's website. And I would also like to welcome the members of the public who are listening to this online. Before we begin, I would like to confirm who is present. Trin Coates, Senior Democratic Service Officer, will ask members to indicate their presence after their name is called.
Okay, thank you Chairman. Good morning Members. Could I please ask you to confirm your presence when your name is called? So first we have Chairman, councillor Carl Macy.
Present.
Vice Chairman, councillor Brewis.
Present.
Councillor Bill Bilton.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Suzanne Barker-Milan.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Matthew Fido.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Sandra Harrison.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Kebra Brown.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Rob Kendrick. Is that present? Yeah. Councillor Colin Matthews. Present. Can you turn your microphone on Councillor Matthews?
Good morning Katrina. Good morning Chair. Present.
Thank you. Councillor Robin Renshaw.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Angela White.
Present.
Councillor Mark Whittington.
Present.
Councillor Stephen Woodley.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Ray Wotton.
Present.
And Dr Brian Wocky.
Present.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. In which case we also have present councillor Sue Woolley, Executive Councillor for NHS Liaison and Community Engagement. Councillor Mike Thompson, Executive Support Councillor for NHS Liaison and Community Engagement. John Turner, Chief Executive for Lincolnshire Clinical Commission Group. Andrew Morgan, Chief Executive of United Lincolnshire Hospitals Trust. Maz Bosh, Chief Executive for Lincolnshire Community Health Services. Tracey Pilcher, Director of Nursing for the Lincolnshire Community Health Services Trust. Liz Ball, Interim Chief Nursing Officer for the Lincolnshire Clinical Commission Group. Andy Fox, Public Health Consultant, and Simon Evans, Health Scrutiny Officer. Is there anyone else present who will be participating at the meeting at all? Please say now. Note, in which case, I would like to ask members of the committee and other participants to type speak using the chat function when you wish to ask a question or make a contribution. My preference is that you do not use the hands up function. Also, please turn off your camera and microphone when not participating. Please keep your questions and contributions succinct and concise. Ideally, no more than two questions per item. Out of the three main agenda items, I expect we will be spending most of our time on item six. I would also like to stress the importance of treating all our contributors today with respect and to bear in mind our roles as constructive scrutineers. I'd now like to move into Agenda Item One. Apologies for absence of members. Katrina, can you report those please?
Thank you Chairman. We've received one apology for absent from councillor Glynnis Scalesey.
Okay, thank you very much. In which case we'll move on to Agenda Item Two. Declarations of Members' Interests. Do members have any interest to the cloud please? Note, okay, in which case we'll move on to Agenda Item Three. Minutes from the 19th of February 2020. I'd like to confirm those minutes. And can I ask for a proposer? Councillor Brewis. Councillor Brewis, are you there?
I am here and I propose that we accept them. A long time ago when I moved, we accept them.
Thanks very much. And councillor Kendrick, are you seconding this please?
Yes indeed Mr Chairman, happy to second that.
Thank you very much. In which case I will put this to the vote. Trin Coates will call out the names of the members of the committee and ask them to indicate if they are for, against, or abstain. Please remember to turn on your microphone just before you vote and to turn it off immediately afterwards. Okay Trina, over to you.
Okay, so councillor Carl Macy.
For.
Councillor Chris Brewis.
For.
Councillor Matthew Fido.
For.
Councillor Kendrick.
For.
Councillor Matthews.
For.
Councillor Renshaw.
For.
Councillor Whittington. Councillor Whitten.
Sorry, abstain, I wasn't present.
Thank you. Councillor Wotton.
For.
Councillor Woodley.
For.
Councillor Bilton.
For.
Councillor Mrs Harrison.
For.
Councillor Barker-Milan.
For.
Councillor Mrs Kebra Brown.
For.
Councillor Mrs Angela White.
For.
Thank you. So that is thirteen for Chairman and one abstention.
Thank you. Those minutes are carried. In which case I'd like to move on to Agenda Item Four, the Chairman's announcements. My announcements have been circulated with the agenda and supplementary announcements have been emailed. Supplementary announcements cover: one, the finalised version of page 141 of the Agenda Pack; two, the differences in the rates of coronavirus infection and mortality rates in Lincolnshire; and three, the renal dialysis service and the opening of the Fishcove Road Site in Boston. Can I ask that the Chairman's announcements and supplementary announcements are noted please?
I would happily move that they're noted Chairman, yes. And thank you for the comprehensive nature of them, thank you.
Thank you councillor Brewis. Do I have a second for those please?
I was seconded.
Thank you. I didn't see who came up on that one. Trina, did you catch that?
No, I didn't see that.
Okay, whoever it was that seconded, please can you put on your video as well as your audio?
Seconded.
Thank you.
I'm going to take these on box, so I assume everyone's happy. So unless there is dissent, please raise now. Note, okay, in which case they're carried. I'd now like to move to Agenda Item Five, the long future response to COVID-19. I said this on page nineteen to twenty-two of the report pack relates to the NHS's direct response to COVID-19. The impact of COVID-19 on our services and plans for the restoration of services will be considered under item six. We have four contributors for this item and they are: John Turner, Chief Executive of Lincolnshire CCG; Andrew Morgan, Chief Executive for United Lincolnshire Hospitals Trust; Maz Bosh, Chief Executive for Lincolnshire Community Health Services Trust; and Tracey Pilcher, Director of Nursing for Lincolnshire Community Health Services Trust. I'd like to hand over to you for the presentation now please and we will take questions at the end and ensure they come through the panel please. Thank you.
Okay, morning Chair, morning everyone. Hope you and your families are all keeping well through these really difficult times. Chair, would it be okay if I just sort of made some opening comments and highlighted a few points from the paper? I'll assume it's read and then we can perhaps get on to the comments and questions from the committee?
Yes, thank you John, that would be very helpful.
Okay, thank you. So the comments I'd like to make please firstly, clearly this virus has had a profound and deep impact on our country, obviously the world, our county and our NHS in particular. We all know this is an unprecedented period for the country. And I'm sure the committee will join with me and colleagues in just noting with great sadness the number of people who have lost their lives to this virus. We, as you know, are well over, I think, forty-one thousand now, aren't we, across the UK? I'd also like to just pay tribute to all of the NHS staff in the county who have done an exceptional job over the past few months in terms of keeping the NHS going and dealing with the demands upon them. But also to all the staff across the care sector, who clearly we work very closely with, and the key workers who have all played their part in supporting the NHS and our families as well. Certainly, I'm very proud and grateful of all the work that they've done to support health in Lincolnshire. And I'd also like to say thank you to the people of Lincolnshire for all of their support they've given the NHS, both in terms of following the guidance from government and also for the support that they've offered through the Thursday evening clapping sort of recognition weekly event and the many notes of support that we've had from them. In terms of the impact of the virus on health in Lincolnshire, clearly it's been exceptionally challenging across the country and the county. But the infection rate for Lincolnshire has been amongst the lowest in the country. So when you look at all of the case numbers, Lincolnshire out of the forty-four areas in England is usually second or third from bottom or top in terms of the lowest rates. So we've had the lowest rates in the community, the lowest rates in hospital, the lowest rates in care homes. So I think we need to be at least thankful for that. In terms of the rates per hundred thousand, the latest information I have at the beginning of June is that the England average rate was two hundred and seventy-two cases per hundred thousand. In Lincolnshire, we were a hundred and forty-seven. So Lincolnshire's rate is more or less half of the England's average rate. Within Lincolnshire, only two areas are above the Lincolnshire average, quite significantly above, these being Boston, which is the highest and is above the England average, and South Holland. All of the five other district council areas in the county are beneath the Lincolnshire average. And just in terms of the number of cases, as at yesterday, we had experienced one thousand one hundred and thirty-six positive cases notified in the Lincolnshire population. We had fourteen patients in hospital yesterday. We've had a total of one hundred and forty hospital deaths in the county. That's mostly in ULHT, but also a small number in our community hospitals and in our mental health services. And we've had three hundred and two total discharges cumulatively from ULHT. So that's a bit about the numbers. The NHS is going through four phases in relation to our COVID response. We are currently coming towards the end of the second phase. So the first phase, which officially started really in the middle of March, although the National NHS Level Four National Incident was declared at the end of January, was the immediate reactive response to the virus. And there were some significant instructions to the NHS to essentially repurpose in the middle of March to prepare for the impact of the virus on the health of the population. The second phase that we are currently in, now that we are beyond the peak, is to restore all essential non-COVID services. So I appreciate that will be just a little bit later on the agenda. But just to emphasise, we're currently in the restoration phase. Then we anticipate probably in July, we will move to the full recovery phase. And then finally, from the first of April next year, into what is currently being called the NHS reset. In terms of the time that we've had through March, April, May and up to date, clearly we are now beyond the peak. All of the public health advice we are receiving is clear that COVID is still very much with us. And clearly we are now managing to take things forward as the lockdown eases, but with COVID in the population. All of the issues that you will have observed in the media nationally, we have experienced locally. I'm pleased to say that we haven't experienced them as extremely as other areas of the country have. But issues such as, for example, PPE, testing, staffing issues, and the impact this has had on NHS staff who are from a black, Asian or minority ethnic background, we have all experienced these here in Lincolnshire. The NHS has throughout this period, and obviously going forward, has remained open for business. So our hospitals have remained open, our GP practices have, our community services have, as have our mental health services. But clearly, the number of people presenting over the past few months hasn't been anything like normal. Our A&E services have experienced much lower numbers of patients presenting. And in Lincolnshire, like in the rest of the country, we have significant concerns over matters such as how we restore cancer care because there has been a significant reduction in the number of patients presenting, initially to general practice and then through to the hospitals with cancer concerns. So these are really worrying issues for us and the health of our population. I want to also emphasise that the NHS has worked, I think, in an exemplary way together in the county and also with our partners in the county. So we work very tightly with colleagues, for example, in the County Council, Care Home Sector, Home Care, the Third Sector and within the Lincolnshire Resilience Forum. And I think that we had previously been working in good partnership together, but this has brought us all, I think even closer together in the county. It's interesting to observe that that doesn't appear to have been the case everywhere in the country. We've also worked hard in terms of public communications and quite a range of methods we've used, social media, the normal media, partner communications and the radio. I'm sure that committee members will be aware that Derek Ward, the Director of Public Health for the county, and usually Liz Ball have been doing a weekly update slot in terms of the overall position with the virus and advice to the public on a Friday. Andrew Morgan has, I think, done a weekly slot as well in terms of the specific impact on the NHS and ULHT in particular. So we've worked hard to try to keep communication flows open and let people know what's going on. And just in terms of our current focus, firstly is to note that despite this horrendous disease, there have been a number of positive steps that have been taken within the NHS. Some good examples are, all of our GP practices are now making a digital offer and the reports that we've had back from most practices are many patients indicating that that is working successfully. So Maz Bosh, who I know is with us today, she has provided some great leadership on the digital front across the county. Many of our mental health services also are now moving to a digital platform, some on a twenty-four seven basis. And again, the reports back of that has been a big step forward. Those changes we had already in mind to progress, but we've now accelerated those in the past couple of months. Other aspects of current focus include support for our black, Asian, minority ethnic staff. You may be interested to know, and I'm very happy to share with the committee if you haven't already received it, that the three NHS chief executives and our chairs issued a public note of support and respect for all of our BAME colleagues earlier in the week. Clearly, the virus has impacted on the BAME community across the country significantly. We have a significant proportion of our staff and our workforce from this background. And you have observed that there have been many issues, including sadly the passing disproportionately of NHS and care staff from the BAME community. Without the support that we and the Lincolnshire population has from them, we simply would not be in a position to run the NHS that we do at the moment. And our chief executive, Simon Stephens, he's the chief executive of the NHS in England, issued a statement last week which reflected on the NHS and health issues and the Black Lives Matter movement, which again, I think the committee may want to have sight of and which we in Lincolnshire have warmly welcomed. We're also focused on mental health recovery. We think that there are some significant impacts of all of this on the mental health of the population we serve. There are specific issues in terms of support we need to offer, for example, people who've become bereaved through this process. Those of our staff who've been through a really difficult emotional time at work. Clearly, we're concerned about matters such as suicide prevention and domestic abuse, which have also been reported through this period. Quite frankly, I'm concerned that the mental health impact of all of this on the community we serve will be far greater going forward as the consequences of the economic position become clearer and the point about instability in terms of unemployment, which I think are obviously a great concern for us all. We're also concerned positively to ensure that the great support that health and care has received from people of Lincolnshire in terms of volunteering to help is somehow built into our health and care system going forward as best we can. I think we've had over seven thousand people in Lincolnshire come forward to volunteer to support our health and care system. Most, but not all of that has been around support for shielded people. And again, I think it's just a brilliant effort across Lincolnshire. And clearly we want to continue with that commitment and enthusiasm that volunteers have offered. And clearly, we're currently focused on the restoration bit, that I know we'll come on to in a few moments. So Carl, I'll pause there if that's okay. Hopefully that's a helpful reflection of the past few months of what has been certainly for me, the most intense period throughout my thirty-plus year NHS career in management and leadership. And I think it's fair to say I speak for my colleagues and many of my clinical colleagues as well in relation to that. It might also be that Andrew Morgan and Maz may want to add to the comments I've made. Thank you very much.
Thank you John, very much appreciated. Andrew, would you like to come in at this point or would you like to hold off until we get to questions?
Hi Chair, it's Andrew Morgan, Chief Executive of ULHT. Just a quick couple of comments. Rest assured, I'm not about to repeat everything that John's just said, but I do support all of his comments. I suppose we've been doing a number of things. One is managing the incident. The second is keeping emergency care and services available. The third, which is more recent, is the restoration of our essential non-COVID services. And the fourth is making sure that if there is a second wave, that we have the capacity and capability available to very swiftly turn that capacity back on stream so that we are not swamped. And that goes back to the very original objectives that the NHS, and I think the country were probably set. One is to save life, the second to prevent harm, and the third was to flatten the demand curve such that it was below the capacity available to the NHS. And John gave you some figures there. I'll just rattle off a couple of figures about how many patients have been through ULHT. So we've cared for four hundred and seventy inpatients so far. And of those, forty-two at one stage or another have been in our intensive care units for varying lengths of time. And I think in the media yesterday, we were celebrating a patient who'd been eighty-one days in intensive care, leaving that unit. And of the four hundred and seventy inpatients we've had to date, we've been able to discharge three hundred and eighteen of those, which again is very, very good news. But in the interests of time and not repeating John's comments Chair, I'll stop at that point. Thank you.
Thank you Andrew. Maz, did you wish to come in and say anything at all?
Just very, very briefly, just to support what's already been said, but also to say during the time we've cared for over three hundred and forty patients in the community, we've currently got three in our community hospitals and we've had three deaths in total within the community services. So just wanted to give those stats and figures. So thank you.
Thank you Maz, that's much appreciated. And I think the whole of the committee will, I'm sure at the end, thank all of the NHS staff for the work they've done. I'm sure it's appreciated throughout Lincolnshire and the whole of the United Kingdom. Right, I'd like to hand over to our list of speakers please and then I will leave it down to our presenters to respond to those. Just before I start bringing in the speakers, councillor Woodley, is it possible please for you to switch your video feed off until you've got a question? for you to switch your video feed off until you've got a question and so on? Thank you, councillor Woodley. In which case, I'd like to bring in our first speaker, councillor White. Would you like to ask a question?
Thank you. I would like to start by thanking you and all the staff who've worked over the past weeks. I follow the National Health Service data and the more local analysis in Lincolnshire. I note that Derek Ward, the Director of Public Health, Lincolnshire, says that we do not yet have access to all the national data. My question is, will you eventually be able to obtain the necessary data so as to identify the variables associated with COVID death in Lincolnshire? For example, age, obesity, underlying medical conditions and location. Thank you.
Perhaps, Chair, if I take that one. Derek Ward is, of course, the county's leading expert on public health for us. I must say, he and his team, I think, have done a superb job over the past few months and they've worked very closely with the NHS team. I think the question about the data and the level of detailed data that we would need, and Derek clearly has advised, will be helpful for us in understanding the impact of the virus on our population and also importantly, help us to manage the continuing presence of COVID in our population is a really important one. So the points that you make, councillor White, are, I think, spot on. I can't add anything to the advice that Derek has given you, other than to add that we in the NHS are full square, supporting all of the public health directors across the country in terms of putting pressure, constructive pressure on the national regime in terms of making the data available to us. I don't think that this is an issue of people holding it back. I think it's more an issue of processing it and validating it and releasing it back to us in a timely way. So I'll just leave it there. Carl, please.
Thank you.
Andy, would you like to come in?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, Andy Fox, consultant in public health here. I can just add to that. Again, thank you, John, for the words of support in terms of Derek and the public health team's response. Derek was referring specifically to access to data about testing from the NHS, the wider NHS national testing scheme known as Pillar Two. This is the testing that's been conducted sort of en masse and we've had some testing arranged at places like the Lincolnshire Showground. For some reason, the national bodies who are running that still haven't managed to get the data flowing to all local authorities to give us exactly what the test results are from that element of the testing regime. Although we have seen some movement in the last couple of days, that hopefully is indicative that that data will now start to flow through. I know that Derek is very happy with the level of communication and engagement and data sharing across the local NHS organisations. It was that national testing data from that particular source that Derek wasn't getting. Hopefully, that will change shortly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Andy, for that. Councillor White, do you have a supplementary question?
No, that's fine, thank you. I just wanted to make the point that it's very interesting to analyse the data because I think there's some pointers for how we should manage health in the future. Thank you.
That's very, thank you very much, councillor White. Councillor Whittington, would you like to come in now, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before I start, I'd also like to echo the comments and thank all those frontline NHS and ambulance staff who've been working really hard, doing a fantastic job over the last few months. And hopefully, Mr. Chairman, we can propose some kind of motion at the end to express our thanks for all of their endeavours. I've got two questions. The first one is just to get some kind of understanding as to how the decision process around all this is taking place. I know it was John from the CCG who made the presentation. I'm guessing all of these decisions are joint decisions. I mean, even though the CCG takes the lead, they would have to be done in consultation with the actual trusts. So just some, and also in the importance of NHS England, so it's just to give some clarity around how, around the decision-making process around all of that, the first question. Second question, it relates to page 20 of the documentation pack. And on that, there's a section headed 'Key Temporary Changes in NHS Service Provision', the number of changes listed there involving a number of units across the county. I can't see anything there relating to Grantham Hospital and the decision to turn the A&E into a UTC. Now, I appreciate that this is a little bit of an historic document, but any decision to downgrade Grantham Hospital A&E even further must have been a decision that hasn't been taken in the last couple of weeks and must have been... So I just can't understand why it's not there. The implication to me, reading that, is that the decision to downgrade Grantham Hospital A&E to a UTC isn't a temporary change to service, it's actually a permanent change, despite what ULHT have been telling people. So I want some clarity around that because as far as I'm concerned, reading that, inference I draw is that the changes to Grantham Hospital A&E are permanent and not temporary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. What would you say, councillor Whittington? Though I appreciate your comments, this is, I think, more for item six, the second question. However, I will hand over to our speakers for them to answer in what way they can. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for your comments of support for NHS staff and councillor White for her comments of support earlier as well. In terms of who makes the decisions, the first point I'd like to make is that in March, we received, on the 17th of March, very clear instructions that went out across the NHS in terms of what our immediate response was required to be. That, if you like, kicked off the phase one. And then at the end of April, we received a similar letter in relation to phase two. The way that it has worked in Lincolnshire is that the CCG and the trusts, we have all worked exceptionally closely together. So that any decisions that are made, we are all working closely with each other, supporting each other on. And many of the decisions require joined-up working across, not just the trust services, but with our colleagues in primary care and some in care homes and home care as well. So we have all been working exceptionally closely together. I don't think anyone has made any decisions that we haven't shared with each other as we've been approaching the need to make them. But we equally declare that the three NHS trusts are the authorities that make decisions relating to their individual trust services and they have, and that the CCG also has its own individual responsibilities in relation to services as well. So the range of decisions that have been made, if it's, for example, related to mental health and learning disabilities, have been made within LPFT. If it's in relation to community hospital services or community care, healthcare, that's been our colleagues in LCHS. Or if it's been in ULHT services, then that's clearly ULHT. They are responsible for making those decisions. But I want to absolutely emphasise that we have been, we already were pretty joined up, but we have been absolutely joined up on that process. And perhaps, Chair, we'll come back to the specific question of Grantham later on in the agenda, but just to say that the documents that the committee has in front of it, the committee's secretary kindly pulled together on the basis of reports that the CCG had already put in the public domain now a couple of weeks ago. The situation is exceptionally fast-moving for us, which is why the four chief execs, myself and the three trust chief execs, we actually meet together virtually every day in terms of reviewing the position, discussing the decisions that are coming up and the options that we've got. I'll pause there, Chair. Obviously, you may want to bring Andrew and Maz in as well.
Yes, thank you, John. Andrew or Maz, would you like to come in on that point that have been raised, please?
Yes, I won't repeat the decision processes bit. We've all had our own goal commands. This is an emergency planning process, so we make decisions through that, but those goal commands do link in consistently to make sure that decisions one party's taking it, A, is known and B, doesn't cut across the others. In terms of the second question, which I know is the next-gen item, but I wouldn't want silence to be an agreement with councillor Whittington's comment, just to be really clear, the inference that the changes are permanent would be a false position to take. These are temporary changes. The decision was made by my board on the 11th of June. I think that's just one of those timing issues about when papers go out for your committee. But I just thought I needed to be really clear, just in case anyone read into silence from me that I was agreeing with the statement made. I'm not. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Maz, would you have anything further to add at this point?
Nothing further in terms of what we've just spoken about. I mean, we do have Tracy Pilcher join us on this call, who is a goal commander. And if that's helpful for people to understand how some of the decisions are made, I'm sure she could provide an update on that, if that's helpful.
I think it would be at this point, please. So yes, Tracy, if you wouldn't mind coming in, that would be great.
Okay, morning, everybody. Thank you. So I think John kind of outlined broadly the decision-making process, but it's just also to understand that on a daily basis and throughout this response, we've had incident command centres working and each organisation has what we describe as a goal commander or strategic commander, who is there to lead across the system and understand the impact. So some of the decisions we made across Lincolnshire were on the basis of NHS EI's instructions about what services needed to be implemented. So some services we expanded, and I think in the list in the pack, we've got a list of services that we have temporarily changed. But probably the other part about that is there are some services we expanded. So our community nursing teams worked, normally they worked from eight till seven each day. They expanded from eight till 10 o'clock in the evening. We expanded our clinical assessment service so that we had better kind of response. And so some of the services that are kind of detailed in the pack haven't got the underpinning foundations that we put in place. So those goal decisions we make and we document each day. And while some of those decisions at the very beginning, we had to write very quickly, we then retrospectively have taken through our boards. We've done quality impact assessments to look at the impact of that and that broader impact on the health and wellbeing of the community. And as we go through restoration, which is the next paper, what we have been doing is looking at those impacts and understanding which services we need to put back in place, how they need to function, and then also the parts around how we make sure that some of the, I don't know, certainly it's very high on Andrew's agenda, around the bit around cancer services and the impact and unintended harm to patients that haven't been able to access services through this response phase.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Tracy. In which case, we'll move on to councillor Fido, please, you have questions.
Trying to get this on. Oh my God, what is that background? Right, forgive the background, I don't know how to change it. Yeah, first of all, I wanted to sort of add on to what's already been said, acknowledging, you know, the hard work that's gone on over the last few months for everybody within the NHS and our carers. I also wanted to further add a couple of the services that often get forgotten, including fire and rescue, the police service, and in my opinion, the most forgotten service of all, Her Majesty's Prison Service as well. I've got a couple of friends who are prison officers who, again, have been continuing and struggling to do their best throughout this time. And again, also adding on to everybody I know in Lincolnshire who has jumped on board with the Good Samaritan app as well, volunteering in their local communities. It's just been really, really heartening to see how everybody has pulled together at this time. My question, one of my questions was sort of following how deaths are reported across Europe and the world, is how an exact cause of death is actually recorded for people, where, one, there is, you know, if someone has clearly got COVID-19 and that has been an outright cause of death, or where there are suspected symptoms in conjunction with other underlying medical conditions, what the final decision on that as to how cause of death is recorded for those people? Because I think different countries, from what I was reading, has different methods of doing that, which can sometimes lead to under-reporting or over-reporting of figures. How are things done within the UK in order to try and make our numbers as accurate as possible and, again, provide closure for families as well for those who are deceased?
Chair, that's a great question in terms of death certification, recording, what we're doing in the UK, how that compares to other countries. It might be that this is more a public health question rather than an internal NHS one. I don't know if Andy is in a position to be able to offer some feedback on that.
Would you like to come in at all, please?
Hi there. Yes, I get fantastic points. In general, I can't speak with the specifics about how other countries obviously are managing the data and the death notifications, et cetera. I would say that in general, one of the things that set the UK apart in terms of the overall international response has been our constant desire to refine the data reporting. And you have seen over time, in terms of the cases, sudden jumps, sudden increases as more cases are found in terms of retrospective. The other thing that I would add is that there are some inherent challenges to this. Essentially, there's, with any kind of test, there's a risk of false negatives and false positives, which may be vanishingly small if you only have a few tests, but when you've run a few hundred thousand tests, as obviously we have, you are going to get plenty of false negatives and false positives. So there will always be that that needs to be borne in mind. And without wanting to, as I say, to talk in detail about other countries' responses, I'm very confident the UK system that we have here, although a lot of it is national rather than local, is one of the best in the world at keeping a good track on the cases that we have, bearing in mind some of those challenges. I really wouldn't want to go into any more detail than that at present. And that's my kind of professional opinion as a public health consultant. This is actually something the UK is pretty good on in general, and we do have good data, albeit data that has been constantly refined and there are challenges, as I've indicated, around false negatives and false positives.
Thank you. Councillor Fido, do you have a supplementary question?
No, like I say, within the sort of boundaries of what my question was, I can obviously appreciate that perhaps it's not within the remit of the speakers present to be able to answer that. So I duly acknowledge that, to be fair.
Okay, thank you, councillor Fido. Councillor Woodley, I'll let's bring you in now, please.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I first would like to start by saying how I first would like to start by saying how proud I am of all the NHS staff, not only in Grantham, Lincoln and Boston, but across the country as well, with the way they've coped and worked really hard with this pandemic. And I currently praise them and really thank them. My question really, I think, to John Turner is regarding staff. John, can you tell me how the staff have been supported, particularly those who have had to travel from Grantham to Boston to work? How has their morale been? And how has their sickness rate? And have they been provided with the full protective equipment?
Morning, Ray. Thank you for that. I wonder actually if I should best pass that to Andrew and Maz, who in the trust have sort of got direct responsibility for the employment of these staff, please.
Hello, it's Maz. Probably if I can pick up on the health and wellbeing, because that's been a significant part of the work that we have been doing as a system and also supporting colleagues in primary care, but also extending it to our colleagues in care home as well. So we've set up at the very early stages a seven days a week, eight till eight, health and wellbeing offer. That offer was from things like understanding from physical and mental illness to emotional support and just asking questions. So we had it triaged on a clinical basis. But we also wrapped around psychological support and also dedicated things like virtual cuppers and support networks in order that people could come together in a virtual space and seek the access. So we've increased our offer. We've increased our offer across the whole of the board. And that's been a really positive. In addition to that, our workforce cell that we worked very cohesively together, any staff briefings have gone out across all organizations and have been really consistent. And I think that's one of the key things that's really helped us, that we've been giving consistent and same messages in all organizations. So we've helped people. So we've been really clear about PPE. I'll get Andrew to come in in a moment from an acute perspective, because I know he's been actively involved in that. But we've been really clear with our workforce about how we can support them, asking them. We've got various networks set up. So for our Black and Asian and minority ethnic communities, they've got a virtual network set up. We've actually ensured that anything that we've done, we've got a full process and we're seeking feedback. So at this moment in time, we're asking our people, what do you need now? We're putting together a psychological package for coming out of inter- restoration and inter-recovery and reset and recognizing that there's a package that we're going to need for probably a couple of years, particularly around supporting people with psychological and mental wellbeing requirements. Andrew, did you want to come in about PPE from the acute perspective?
Yes, thank you. I'll just add a couple of points, councillor, if I may. I think our staff have been incredibly flexible and responsive. Sometimes that's because we've had to change services around. Sometimes it's filling gaps because of other staff being off sick or isolating. So I think we've all spent time today commending our workforce. John has done it collectively on behalf of the NHS. But I just want to say how impressed I've been with people's flexibility. It'd be fair to say not everyone is happy at all times. We employ, including our bank staff, you know, nine and a half, 10,000 people. So it would be a surprise if everyone was happy about some of the changes people have made. So we've had some support functions moving in to support frontline services. We've had finance people working in stores. We've had clinical staff moved from different sites, particularly when we've suspended some services. Those clinical staff have skills. We've assessed what skills people have got, what qualifications they've got. And that's allowed us to move people around. We have been very clear, there are no job losses in any of the changes. There's been nobody furloughed or anything like that. Our basic approach is to ensure that nobody is financially disadvantaged by any change. So travel gets paid. If bank shifts are cancelled or people are off sick, they still get paid. So we've been really clear about no financial disadvantage. It'd be fair to say that people are tired. We have had to cancel some annual leave. That's made it really difficult. I know some people can't actually go anywhere for their annual leave, but it is still a tiring time. So we have put in some amended rules about how much annual leave people should be taking. That, as much as I think is a health and safety issue, people cannot just work month on month under some of this pressure. We have daily updates for our staff side, Chair and executive secretary, so they know, back to what Tracy was saying about goal command. They meet with goal command every day, so they understand what we're doing, why we're doing it. And we also have a weekly catch-up with the whole executive team and the unions to explain again either what we're doing or what we will be about to do. The final point about PPE, yes, people who move between roles will always have the appropriate PPE for the role that they are doing. And I know PPE has been a really big national focus. It's consumed huge energy here, quite rightly, because it's really important. We have followed the National Expert Guidance at all times. We have never run out of stock. It's been a bit touch and go sometimes, but we have always ensured that we've got the right stock in the right place. That doesn't mean that everyone agrees with the guidance. Some people do not accept the National Expert Guidance. But we are in a level four national incident. We do need consistency across the NHS. We also need to make sure we use what stock we've got appropriately. So we have provided the right PPE in line with the expert guidance. That doesn't stop some people not being happy with what they've got. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Woodson, I've got Tracy Pilcher that would like to come in first before you respond.
Chair, I have a supplementary question, please.
Yeah, can you allow Tracy to respond, please, because she'd like to respond before that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I just wanted to kind of bring in here as well, I think all organizations have developed a daily dashboard. And on our daily dashboard, we have an oversight of the organization. So I can see at a glance, things like how many people are off from a workforce perspective and if they're off COVID-related or if they're shielding. I can see at glance our PPE supply, because as Andrew pointed out, PPE has been a significant part of our COVID response. And what we wanted to make sure, and as part of our restoration phase, is the PPE requirements as we restore services, so that we make sure that we are protecting staff and supporting them as we bring new services and services back online. The other thing that the daily dashboard does do for us is, as Andrew pointed out and I think you've identified, we have redeployed staff because we needed to provide services in a different way. But what we have also done is make sure that we've provided education, training and clinical supervision for those staff, so that if they are working in unfamiliar environments, we've taken account of that. And I think that's enabled us to have this agile response, but also understand how the organization's responding and that connection into the system.
Thank you, Tracy. Ray, would you like to come back?
Yes, thank you very much indeed, Chairman. I'd like to ask a question about staff sickness. Has the staff sickness increased, particularly at Boston over the pandemic period? And what facilities do you have for testing staff to make sure they haven't or have got coronavirus?
Andrew?
Thank you. Just pressing the right buttons. I mean, we have had, I mean, if I go back over time, overall sickness in the trust is currently on a downward track. Similarly, the people who are off either sick with COVID or having to shield or stay at home or isolate because of COVID again, the numbers are going down. Fair to say that the number of staff absent at Pilgrim has been slightly higher than at our other sites. And in terms of, I think your final point there, councillor, about testing, so far, we've tested 1,942 staff across the trust. And of those, 1,942, 233 have come back as a positive swab. So that's the swabbing of have you got it at the moment. We've also recently started the antibody testing for those staff that want it. Again, we've swabbed 2,294 people. And of those, 212 antibodies have been detected, so about 9%. But as I say, absence is on a downward track at the moment.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. And thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. I'm totally aware of the time and I have four speakers that are still wishing to speak. Therefore, after these four speakers, I plan on asking my questions and moving to the proposal. So I will bring in councillor Kendrick, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I too would echo the comments from my colleagues as regards to the NHS. And John saying about how unprecedented situation, I can only imagine how difficult it must be for people in the NHS. In the 33 years I spent in the NHS, I never encountered anything like this. So it must be absolutely horrendous for people to cope with. My question is actually, a constituent reported to me the other day that on having a consultation actually by the phone with her GP, the GP remarked that they might consider sending this person for a scan. But the GP remarked that they were very difficult to come by at the moment because of the current situation. Now, I know we're talking about post-COVID sort of move forward. I was just wondering if this is just a one-off remark from a GP or if there is any evidence that sort of routine scans for things have been delayed because of the COVID crisis. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for the question. It may be a one-off remark in that it depends on exactly what scan, for exactly what purpose. And obviously, you've just made a general point there. I think it's fair to say that in terms of diagnostic services, there are, we are quite challenged across the country, let alone the county, in terms of ensuring that these are fully sort of restored as part of the process that we are going through. And there are a number of specific challenges relating to specific parts of diagnostic services. So without knowing the details of the particular case, I think generally we do have challenges across the country in terms of specific aspects. Andrew, were you in a position to be able to say anything more specific about where you and HT are in relation to this, please?
Again, without having those specifics, I can't comment on the particular constituent. But yes, we have seen, and I think we do mention it later in some of the other reports, some diagnostic work, some screening work has been delayed during the managed phase of COVID. And similarly, if you look at some of the waiting times for diagnostics, those have significantly lengthened for a number of people. So when we talk about the restoration of services, diagnostics is always going to be one of those ones, particularly those requiring urgent diagnostic tests. That's exactly the sort of thing we need to get back on track as quickly as possible. But as I say, I can't know more unless I knew what particular diagnostic. But the thrust of the question, I understand, yes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question at all, councillor Kendrick?
Yeah, I mean, I did have some more detail. I didn't want to go into detail about this particular constituent. So I think it would something along the lines of either kidney or liver problem or gallstones or something like that. But obviously, this is not the forum to discuss an individual's problem. But thank you. I get the drift of what's being said. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, councillor Kendrick. In which case, I'd like to bring in councillor Brewer, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I too would like to join Matthew, Fido and everybody else's compliments on the health service and everybody who's worked so hard. And also not to miss out, certainly my local experience, incredible job being done by our pharmacies. They're doing an incredible local job. But I, as you know, Chairman, am probably the only one at this meeting who's ever suffered lockdown in the past. And I think I've told John before, when I was a teenager, we had a case of plague near us and the man's daughter was in my sister's class at their school. Changed the way I behave in my life and I hope it'll... This one is a lot more serious. I've got two points really to make. One was a general one. I think this particular presentation and this meeting has made most of us who've been involved with this particular aspect of scrutiny realize how much we've missed our meetings. And whilst I have in no way suggesting that we want in any way to put even more work on the visitors and presenters, I think the thoroughness of which is being dealt will enable us to deal with a lot of the queries that people raise with us as well. And I'm very grateful to everybody for it. And I think we need to be kept up to scratch. And I'm very glad meetings have started again. My other point arrived. People are telling me, those I speak to at more than social distancing, that a lot of them say they're going to change their lifestyle and look after their own health a lot better. Does John think the only bonus that comes from this is a significant number of people will perhaps look after their own health better than they have heretofore? Those are really my questions, Chairman. Thank you.
Chair, I think in terms of the second point, I've heard that as well. And it isn't just that individuals seem to be, some individuals seem to be taking great responsibility for their health, but also the broader point that there's a great sense of community spirit, isn't there? And communities having a concern for each other's health and welfare as well. So I think I'd want to go back to one of the points I made in my opening comments, that we do need to, and I think the we is us all, think through how we make the best of the community support that is evident at the moment and the additional, if you like, way in which many people are taking responsibility for their own health. You'll recall way back when we were discussing in previous meetings the development of the Lincolnshire Long-Term NHS Plan, that we want to put much more effort on prevention rather than cure, much more effort in supporting people to self-care and take responsibility for their own health, and much more effort in providing integrated care at a local community level. And I think that on all three fronts, we can see that we have probably made, despite these horrendous circumstances, more progress in the last two or three months than we might have envisaged we could potentially make in the next year or two. So I think that all of that is a positive, but we need to make sure that we capture it and build it in going forward and that that level of interest in each other's and one's own health doesn't dissipate as we get back towards whatever a new normal will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brewer, would you like to come back? We might have lost councillor Brewer for the time being. In which case, I will move on to councillor Whittington. If you can make this fairly short, councillor Whittington, as I'm sure you will agree that the substantive item will be item six.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I've got to share a thing in our regular meetings. Hello? I need to give some feedback. Sorry. Just want to thank John and Andrew for clarifying the decision-making process. I think that's really, really important for everybody to actually understand that these are joint decisions that are taken by the CCGs in conjunction with the respective trusts. But my specific follow-up is just back to something that John said. But my specific follow-up is just back to something that John said in terms of the instructions that came to institute both Phase One and Phase Two. First of all, in March, same within of April. I'm presuming they they came from NHS England, but just some clarity as to as to as to where those instructions came from. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, I can confirm they came from NHS England. Uh, the letters of instruction are in the public domain. Uh, they're dated the 17th of March and the 29th of of April. Uh, and I'm sure that we can ensure that they're available for the for the committee.
Okay, thank you, councillor Whittington, and thank you, John. I've just got two questions before I move to the proposal. And that is, I think you've alluded to this in part, but how well did the Lincolnshire providers work with other NHS providers of services to Lincolnshire residents, such as North West Anglia and Northern Lincolnshire and Gaul?
My observation, Carl, would be that um, uh, the, uh, clearly, like our trusts in the county, those trusts have their own NHS trust boards who similarly received the letters and the instructions and had to uh, uh, act in accordance with that. From the CCG's perspective, uh, we are always mindful that a significant proportion of the people who live in Lincolnshire access services at either NWAFT or or NLAG. Uh, and so we as a CCG have kept very tight in with both of those trusts, our teams liaise on a on a regular basis. Uh, and clearly, uh, some of the decisions that we've made have had, albeit they're temporary, have had an impact on on those organisations. Um, so we we work very, very closely with them. So I want to assure you that in the same way that we in the NHS in Lincolnshire have been making sure we keep each other informed and up to date uh, and 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 in the loop, so to speak, daily on what's going on and what's coming up. We have a similar uh, uh, relationship as a CCG with with the two, um, those two trusts. I think it's also fair to say our colleague in EMAS have been a fundamental part of the great NHS response in the county as well. And again, we work very tightly with with them. There have been some specific issues where the trusts have had to work very closely together in terms of that cross-border uh, sort of flow of patients and flow of issues. And certainly from my perspective, that's worked in a highly collaborative and effective fashion. Um, I don't know if Andrew or Maz wants to to say anything further.
Please, John. Yeah, okay. Tracy, I think you'd like to come in first of all.
Yeah, thank you. And one of the things we haven't talked about is, and I don't want to copy it, but we have a cell structure. So as part of our response, we've had a patient flow cell, I'll still do. And in that, we have an out-of-area component. So any pathways, changes that we've made in county, we've made sure that we're communicating with those border organisations. And equally, where we've looked to repatchote patients back into Lincolnshire, so they might have received their treatment in NWAFT or NLAG, but we've made sure that those pathways work. We've got very close, especially under the discharge cell, working relationships across organisations. And I think Maz has put into the chat the other area where obviously LCHS provide services in other counties. So in Peterborough, we provide the UTC. And again, that does mean that any changes that are made, we we do directly communicate with their chief operating officer for NWAFT or the chief operating officer for NLAG around any changes and the impact it might have on their population.
Okay, thank you. Andrew, would you like to come in?
Uh, yes, thank you. So I I think pre-COVID, we work really closely with our partners in other trusts. We're in a number of different networks with them, for example. So we have a cancer network, we have an intensive care network. Uh, that close working has continued throughout the COVID. Our operational colleagues are normally in sort of daily contact with each other. And if I just, you know, happen to be walking around a particular site, uh, I will often see colleagues from other trusts in our sites. Uh, and I happen to be based at Lincoln today. Uh, earlier this week, I see intensive care transfers coming in to Lincoln from outside where we've had the capacity that they were seeking. So I I would just say overall, it was good beforehand. Uh, a crisis normally forces you together as well. So I I can, you know, give a positive response to the question, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. That's helpful. I've just got one further question, and that is on page 27, section V, part C. It states there are no significant concerns with star sickness or availability. Is this still the case? And what is the current level of staff that are unavailable to work through sickness? John, your microphone's not on.
I was gonna do it at some point. Um, I just, 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 just to say, I'll I'll pass, I think, to Andrew and Maz on that. But we have, haven't we touched on staff welfare and absence earlier in the in the discussion? Uh, and I took from from the comments that uh, we're in a pretty reasonable position, given the overall situation. Uh, but again, I'll I'll pass to to Andrew and Maz, please.
Thank you. I've got Tracy as well that would like to come in. So Tracy, I'll start with you, please.
Yeah, I promise. So at the moment, as I said, we have a daily dashboard. So we have six people off sick related to COVID. So there are very low levels of sickness. And our more impact is on shielding. So obviously, as part of our kind of COVID response, we've got vulnerable groups of staff that we're we're shielding and making sure they're not being exposed to to high-risk areas. So we have got that impact. At the height of the response, we were working with sometimes up to 20% of our workforce not available, whereas now it's very low levels. It's 0.1% of our workforce on a daily basis.
Thank you, Tracy. Andrew, would you like to come in?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. I was just looking up. In terms of staff unavailable due to COVID across the trust, yesterday, we had 323 people not not available. And you you might think, well, that's just plucking numbers out of the air. I'm just looking through my list here. If I go back to the 27th of April, it was 606 people uh, who were not available because of either their own sickness or shielding or isolation. Um, yeah, 7th of May, it was 538. So I I think the direction, we had an absolute peak at the start. A month ago, 15th of May, it was 430 people. So it it peaked, it's coming down. Uh, but that is still, you know, a sizable proportion uh, that we would want to get back as soon as possible. Uh, and going back to John's introduction, when we talked about saving life, preventing harm and flattening the curve, one of the other national objectives was to support our staff uh, so that they can stay well and ideally can stay at work. Uh, and that's what a number of our efforts have been about. Can you be safely at work, even if it's not in your normal role? Uh, can you do other duties such that you fill a gap uh, that the organisation's got? And that's where the redeployment efforts have happened. It's where the health and wellbeing work is designed to help people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. In which case, I'd like to move to a proposal or a motion. I would first of all like to propose that we record the committee's gratitude to all NHS staff in Lincolnshire on the response to COVID-19, along with the key workers and the volunteers, and to record the committee's condolences to the families of those who have lost loved ones. If I have a second to that, please?
I'd like to second that, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brewer. Okay, in which case, I will put this out to the vote. Trina Clay, will you call out the names, please, for the members of the committee? And if I can ask you to indicate that you are either for, against, or abstain. And please remember to turn on your microphone just before you vote and to turn it off immediately afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, councillor Carl Macy. Uh, councillor Chris Brewer.
Four.
Councillor Matthew Fido.
Four.
Councillor Rob Hendrick.
Four.
Councillor Matthews.
Four.
Councillor Renshaw.
Four.
Councillor Whittington.
Four.
Councillor Woodton. Councillor Woodton.
Says four.
Councillor Woodlett.
And councillor Woodlet says four.
Thank you. Oh, hold on. It's uh. Yep. Um, councillor Bilton.
Four.
Councillor Mrs. Harrison.
Four.
Councillor Bach Milan.
Four.
Uh, councillor Kaby Brown.
Four.
And councillor Mrs. White.
Four.
That's unanimous then. 13 for Chairman.
Thank you, Trina. In which case, I'd like to now move on to agenda item six, the restoration of services. The item is set out on page 23 to 144 of the agenda pack. Please note the corrections page 141 of the agenda pack, which is covered in my supplementary announcements. As before, we have four contributors for this item, who are John Turner, Chief Executive of Lincolnshire CCG, Andrew Morgan, Chief Executive for United Lincolnshire Hospital Trust, Maz Fosh, Chief Executive, Lincolnshire Community Health Services Trust, and Tracy Kelcher, Director of Nursing for the Lincolnshire Community Health Services Trust. I'd like to hand over you to the presentation again, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I'll, um, just let me bring the to pack up. So, um, uh, I I take it that the the committee will have uh, would have uh, uh, read the the papers. So I'll I'll not take up time going through through these in detail. But I'll just make a few few key points, really. Uh, firstly, just to note, um, when councillor Whittington was asking about the NHSE uh, letters of instruction in relation to the second one, the 29th of April, I see it's actually included in the pack as part of the CCG papers. So the committee's got got sight of the way in which we're communicated with and the the expectations that NHSE has of us. As I mentioned earlier, we're currently into, uh, well into now, uh, Phase Two, which is the restoration of essential urgent non-COVID services. You would see from the letter what the range of services is and what the expectations are. Uh, there was, there's an update in terms of the status of of progress in relation to that in the middle of May. Um, uh, and I'm I'm able to confirm that, you know, we've we've progressed, obviously, as you'd expect significantly since since then. Sitting behind all of those uh, uh, action points lies a huge amount of work that our teams collectively and individually have been doing to restore services. And I'm pleased to to share with the committee uh, that, uh, with the exception of just one or two specific services, uh, that the overall position of the NHS in in Lincolnshire is, uh, I think, pretty, pretty impressive in terms of how we are restoring those services. You also see in the pack, uh, uh, papers that have been considered by by trust boards as well. So I I I'll take those as read and obviously other specific questions for for trust, uh, for the trusts, my colleagues can 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 take that. Um, I just really wanted to come back to a point that councillor Whittington raised in the previous item, uh, which Andrew responded to. And just to be absolutely unequivocal that, uh, the changes which ULHT have announced in relation to services at Grantham Hospital, uh, they actually only have the authority to make those changes on an emergency basis and on a temporary basis. ULHT nor any trust in the country can make permanent significant changes to services. And that's just an absolute fact. Uh, as we've discussed, I think at the committee before, the only authority that can make permanent changes to to service configuration is the CCG. Um, and that we can only do that having gone through a process of public consultation. Uh, we've discussed on other occasions, uh, the changes that we, uh, uh, are want to progress to public consultation. We've had the Healthy Conversation exercise last year, uh, which described the services and the emerging options in relation to those services. Clearly, the CCG still has, we're progressing as as hard as we can in the current circumstances, the process by which we can go out to public consultation on, uh, the healthy conversation changes. So hopefully, that's a bit more detailed, Chair. Uh, but just to absolutely underpin the points that Andrew made when he responded to that uh, earlier in the in the meeting. Uh, the other point that I just wanted to emphasise is that, um, uh, again, in relation to to Grantham, um, we have had to, uh, well, we support absolutely ULHT in the position that they've they've taken. And the reason for that is because we have very significant concerns about cancer patients in Lincolnshire. We have very significant concerns about patients who are not getting their operations. Now, their operations may not be immediately life-threatening, but they are massively life- affecting. Um, so, um, uh, whilst I totally recognise, of course, uh, the, um, some of the concerns, which are absolutely understood and legitimate in terms of the temporary changes at Grantham, we must have in mind the hundreds and hundreds of Lincolnshire residents who are in urgent need of getting their care. Uh, and we need to ensure that the best arrangements in this awful situation that we are in are put in place to do that. Uh, so, uh, we are not saying that any of the changes that we have made are perfect or ideal. What we are saying is that we believe, and we totally support ULHT, that these are the very best changes, temporary changes, that it's possible for us to make to ensure that we, uh, catch up and, uh, provide the best, uh, we can to these people and patients in Lincolnshire in the circumstances that we are currently in. So, Chair, I'll pause there. Clearly, there's a whole raft of issues in the trusts and with the CCG about the totality of, uh, uh, urgent, uh, non-COVID services restoration. And a bit like Phase One, uh, the whole of the NHS and our teams have come together uh, to try to make the very best arrangements we can for the people of Lincolnshire, uh, given the situation that we're facing. Um, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Andrew, were you still requesting for a comfort break for two minutes?
Yes, please. Man of a certain age, I'm afraid.
That's fine. Okay, we'll have a two-minute break if everyone can be back for 11:32 at latest, because I'm conscious of the time. Thank you. Hang on, normally I keep my powder dry till, uh, the end, however, following on from what you've raised, John, the one thing I would say is, we've been in a similar position before with Grantham, I understand that COVID is something that's out of the ordinary. But going on with the service changes that are posed, going until the twenty-first of Mar- uh, until the end of March, sorry, in twenty-twenty-one, will we find ourselves in a position where actually it's became permanent again, I understand your reasoning of what you've said. But that's what we had before, and that is a major concern, I think, for, for all members of the public and especially the people of Grantham.
Uh, thank, thank you, Carl, um, yes, and the people of Grantham uh, made that point very clearly to us in, in healthy conversation and through their representatives. I think we're coming up to four years, aren't we, uh, since the, uh, uh, temporary changes to, to A and E were made? So I absolutely recognise, um, um, that. Um, uh, uh, clearly, um, we need to see how the rest of the year plays out uh, in terms of, um, whether we get a second, uh, peak of COVID uh, and how successful we are in the NHS in terms of restoring care and services and, and catching, uh, up. Uh, but I absolutely accept, um, your point and the, the point that I've heard loud and clear from Grantham, uh, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, we are saying it's temporary, but that doesn't feel like the experience that, that people of Grantham have had over the past few years. All I can say, Carl, in response to that, is that, um, without repeating my earlier comments, is that we have had the healthy conversation exercise. We've engaged openly with the people of Grantham, as indeed we have with people across the whole of the county. That was, um, extremely informative and useful exercise for us. Uh, uh, we are looking to progress, uh, the process by which we can, uh, get to a point of public consultation on those acute service changes. I recognise we have been talking about those, um, for, uh, quite a period now, and that healthy conversation started, what, fifteen months ago, uh, now, so I, I absolutely recognise the point that you've made. I just return to, uh, that the core point I've made is any permanent significant changes, uh, can only be made, uh, by the authority of the CCG. Clearly, we would work with the trusts very, very closely, uh, 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 and following a public consultation exercise in line with the mandatory requirements upon us.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, I've got a list of speakers already, so I'd like to bring in councillor Angela White first, please.
Sorry, I, I didn't ask to speak on this item, I apologise if my name was on the list.
That's fine, no problem at all, okay, I'll move straight on to councillor Robin Renshaw, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, as everybody knows in, in the room, we're charged with effective scrutiny, and councillors require a lot of information to do this effective scrutiny. What I'm concerned about is a very large, um, document we, we presented for this, for this meeting, so much detail. Now, what, what I'm really asking for, it's probably more a question for the democratic services than, than the, the NHS officers, and that's for a distinction between, uh, executive summary item and, uh, items for, for, for background information, because I played through the, the pages and I lost the will to live after about hundred and forty pages. And there's so much detail, and it's all relevant information, but it's a lot of detail that is, uh, specialist to, to clinical staff and, and, and very little about other, very council can, or any, on it, so, um, or a housekeeping question than, than a message to the clinical. But, uh, uh, it, it is an is- issue that I think should be addressed. Thank you, Chairman.
Simon, would you like to come in quickly, I'm just conscious of, I've just seen you, you pop up there.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, uh, as, as I'm responsible for putting together the papers, I will respond to this. Um, we have used largely for this meeting, unlike the usual practice, uh, we, we've used NHS, uh, board papers. Um, now, I know that the committee's used to, uh, papers being drafted, but part of this is not to put too much onus on NHS managers having to prepare separate papers. So the, the paper, certainly the, the third paper that's attached, which is the board paper from ULHT from last Thursday morning, uh, is, is significant in length, but it is also, I think, as, as councillor Renshaw said, there is a lot of relevant information in there. Um, so it, it, it is perhaps, okay, ideally, we would have had time to put together an executive summary, but on this occasion, we, we felt it was necessary to provide all the information to the committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Simon. Councillor Renshaw, would you like to come back on that? And I will say that you did break up a little bit, so I'm not sure we caught all of that.
Yeah, th- thank you, Simon, uh, I do appreciate what I, what all members of staff are putting into this, and I'm not, and, and I feel a bit uncomfortable with criticizing anybody about this, because we've all pulled together and cross, cross, across the community, so, uh, thank you very much, and I appreciate what you're saying.
Thank you, councillor Renshaw, in which case I'll move on to councillor Woodton, please.
Thank you very much, Dean, Mr Chairman, um, John, sixteenth of August, two thousand and sixteen, the people of Grantham were told that the changes would be temporary, temporary. And you said this morning, temporary on another occasions, as has Andrew Morgan. What strategy have you got for returning Grantham Hospital back to its current status if the pandemic is ended earlier, or the backlog of cancer patients do you have, um, treated correctly? And why can't you divide Grantham Hospital into a green and a blue zone? Thank you.
Thank, tha- thank you, I'll, I'll answer the first part of that and now pass to Andrew in terms of the, the, the green-blue bit. Uh, the, the, I think the bottom line, Ray, is we don't know what the next six or nine months will, will bring. What we do know is that we have, uh, some significant issues in terms of cancer care in the county and in terms of elective care as well, as well as the broader, uh, restoration. Um, we equally don't know exactly how, uh, the, uh, uh, COVID, uh, uh, you know, whether we get a second peak or not, and equally, we, there are many other factors as well that will impact on how productive the NHS can be. Not least, for example, the extent to which the social distancing two-metre, uh, position changes. And, uh, our staff across the service will need to adjust, and obviously we need to ensure that staff are safe and we maintain, uh, the PPE flow and discipline and all of that. So there are quite a number of variables. I think what I can absolutely commit to you is that the CCG, with, uh, Andrew and colleagues in LCHS and LPFT too, are going to be consistently reviewing, uh, this, updating the position. Uh, clearly, uh, if, uh, if things go our way, we might be in a position to, uh, uh, review, uh, what the changes have been earlier, but equally, they could go the other way, uh, as well. And I think we just need to be, to be mindful of that. Uh, and I'm sure that, uh, we'll be able to, um, share with the committee, you know, how, uh, all of that is, 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 is playing out. So you, you, you kept, uh, very well informed of, of that. Andrew, would you be able to talk about the blue-green for us, please?
Uh, certainly, yes, no, I, I don't want to get into too much detail of the, the very long paper that you've got, but your, members will see that one of the options was to have green and blue on the same site, as well as a separate option about having a green, uh, site. Uh, the opposite appraisal that we did, did favour green predominantly for the infection prevention and control requirements about knowing the COVID status of patients before they come on the site. So those accessing the, the green parts of our services, uh, we need patients to self-isolate for fourteen days, we need to test them a couple of days before they come in. Uh, and that cannot be done, uh, when you are having on the same site or mixing with the green patients, uh, those where we do not know, uh, their COVID status. Um, so that, that, that's the reasoning, and I, that's summarising greatly, uh, the, the paper. There, there will be blue on the site because it will be the urgent treatment centre part, but that will have to be kept entirely separate from, uh, the green part. So different staff, different access, different diagnostics. Uh, we cannot have green and blue, uh, mixing on the same diagnostics. And it was interesting, on the day of our board decision, uh, last week, which was the Thursday, uh, I, I, I received a, a further letter from the NHS, uh, executive and NHS improvement, uh, reminding me of the requirements to have dedicated diagnostic and surgical capacity for cancer. Uh, so not mixing it, dedicated capacity that is only used, uh, for COVID-free, uh, patients. We cannot achieve that if we have, um, unplanned admissions onto the, the same site, mixing with the same patient. So it's predominantly an infection prevention and control, uh, issue that we're trying to, to sort out.
Hey, would you wish to come back at all?
Yes, please, uh, Mr Chairman, thank you very much, Dean, and thank you, John, and thank you, Andrew. Um, I fully understand the need for a green site. I mean, I've had cancer myself, so I fully appreciate how worrying and also the fact that patients need that treatment immediately. But what I can't understand is you, in Grantham, you've got the maternity, old maternity block, why that couldn't have been sectioned off, it's got a separate entrance and an exit point? And also, what measures have you got in place to reassure the public, that both of you said temporary again?
Okay, we, we, we did look, as I say, we, we've gone through a detailed option appraisal in the paper, and I know, uh, some people might have used different criteria or might believe that we should have come out with a different, uh, answer. Uh, but we were clear about the, the three options we were looking at, in effect, the do-nothing or no further change, the green and blue on the same site, uh, and then green sites. We applied the three criteria around infection prevention and, and control excellence, the capacity to deliver at scale and the future service resilience. Came up with the green site option, and then it was a case of where, where should we look? We looked at all our sites, we looked at the independent sector as well, uh, and the answer was that Grantham best met, uh, that. I'm, I'm in danger of repeating my, my same answer about mixing on the same site. If we can avoid doing that, uh, we should. Uh, trying to control people's wandering about sites, going to shops, going to coffee shops, parking in different places, touching handles, touching each other, uh, not having the right IPC on. We, we've seen some of those issues here, uh, at Lincoln and in Pilgrim. They are really difficult and they constrain your ability, uh, to get through, uh, the capacity that we need to get through. So I'll, I'll try not to repeat the same answer. Um, so, so the same answer, I suppose, goes to, uh, temporary. Uh, John has been really clear there about these are temporary, uh, arrangements. Although I was in a different trust, uh, in Lincolnshire, I was aware of my inheritance here uh, around A and E. Uh, I've been very clear as accountable officer, and I've been very clear with the board, and the board has been clear back to me uh, that these are temporary changes that we're putting in place. Our effort at the moment has been going on explaining the why are we doing this? And then the what? We're working on the how, so we're working on the implementation in detail of to how we implement the decision that we made, uh, last week. Uh, and one part of that implementation is drawing up the criteria that we will apply to reverse, uh, the temporary changes that we've put in place. And one of those reversal criteria, and they're, they're not sorted as yet, uh, so the effort's going into putting it into place, not unpicking it at the moment, but just to reassure people, we will be sorting out the criteria for the reversal. One of those reversal criteria will be a second wave of COVID, in which case we will have to switch our capacity back to being able to provide medical admissions and respiratory care. Um, but I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know time scales. I want these temporary changes to be for as short as possible. I'm acutely aware of the cynicism, uh, the scepticism, the lack of trust around, uh, the word temporary. I get it, I'm a local resident, I really do get it. Uh, and the whole purpose of doing this, this decision in public was just so people could see what we were doing. I know they don't always trust, uh, what we're doing, uh, but the debate at the board was really clear last week. If you look at what we're doing, but the debate at the board was really clear last week. If you look at waiting lists, waiting times, potential harm to patients, people in fear, not being aware of when their care would be provided, we've had to balance up the whole of Lincolnshire, not just the Grantham part. But just to assure you councillor, I get the temporary bit, I get the cynicism bit, thank you.
Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Just can you expand please on exactly what directed capacity means?
Sorry, you've confused me there. What phrase?
Directed capacity.
What page are you on?
Where is that?
Sorry, I think it was mentioned within the conversation, directed capacity.
I'm not aware I used that phrase, but apologies if I did because I don't know what I'm talking about on that basis, about directed capacity.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. In which case I'll move on to councillor Whittington please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I appreciate the comments that Andrew Morgan has just made. I think he's really hit the nail on the head when he talks about local people around Grantham having trust in the board. This issue provokes so much correspondence, I receive so much correspondence, both from my county council constituents and my district council constituents on this. And it's all around the same thing, it's all around lack of trust, people not believing what they're being told, that they all say, oh you know, August 2016, temporary, 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 they're being told temporary all the time. And quite frankly, it just seems to me there's just been a massive failure in communication that's happened. People can be reassured by the CCG, by the trust board, time and time and time and time again, but eventually it gets to the situation like the little boy who cried wolf. Eventually, people just eventually stop believing what they're being told. And really, you know, there's got to be some way of just trying to reassure people because I struggle, you know, potentially now, we could be up this time next year, we could be nearly five years since that original decision was taken. And people just become just so cynical about it and it really is. And I know we keep getting reassurance and reassurance and reassurance, but people quite simply, John and Andrew, have just lost faith and confidence. And that's reflected in the correspondence I receive from both constituents who use the service, services, and also constituents who work in your services. They tell me the staff morale at the sites is low, people haven't been forced to travel, you know, and how are you going to handle, you know, issue around staff morale? Second question is around how you're going to somehow restart the healthy conversation, restart the acute services review. And this whole issue about consultation, when because of social distancing, you can't organise public meetings anymore, you can't organise public events. So how are you going to undertake consultation given the constraints of social distancing is going to, you know, is involved in at the moment? I mean, I've been asking the same question for several years now. You write to every single household in the county with a questionnaire, with a standardised envelope to actually get their comments. This has now been amplified, this point, by the fact that because we've got social distancing, you can't do any other form of consultation, that is even going to do justice to the term consultation. And the final thing is just a point of clarification around the green site at Grantham. I'm presuming that if somebody goes into the UTC with a, I don't know, they've damaged their arm, it might be a sprain, it might be a break. And I'm presuming that those patients will be referred to the X-ray department at Grantham, which is just up the corridor from A&E. But I'm also presuming that people who are in there having elective surgery undertaken will also have to use the X-ray department. So how are you going to, that kind of sort of destroys your argument about trying to keep the two services separate. So there's some clarification around that. But really, it comes back, Mr Chairman, it's the trust issue. There's no trust in the trust in Grantham. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Whittington. I'll hand over to our presenters please to answer.
Shall I start just by the sort of healthy conversation bit? I absolutely understand what councillor Whittington has just said and I think much of it builds on Andrew's comments about trust and cynicism. I must say that I'm not quite sure that the issue is one of lack of communication, particularly over the past couple of years because we have had healthy conversation and we've worked really hard to listen to people and to take on board their concerns as well as their aspirations. I do absolutely think that the issue is one of trust and belief and the fact that we're coming up to four years since we had the temporary change at Grantham, I think is, you know, feeds that concern quite absolutely legitimately. So I can only just confirm that I totally get the cynicism and the trust issues as well. We did conclude the healthy conversation 2019 exercise at the end of October last year, having run for six months through the year. So we won't be restarting that as such. The next piece of work that we need to do is, which is the CCG's responsibility, is to essentially get agreement from NHS England that we can go out to a public consultation exercise. And we're currently in the process, which will take quite a few months of those discussions and making that case to NHS England. So I think that until we are through the other side of that and are in a position where we can progress formal public consultation, then I think the issues that you highlight about trust and cynicism and all the rest of it will continue. So I completely get that. I think in a sense it is unfortunate that the right place, the right choice in terms of restoring essential non-Covid services, that for ULHT, having gone through their comprehensive exercise, did come out at Grantham. It clearly is the right decision in terms of cancer, elective care and all of the other points. But I absolutely get that that is a temporary change on top of the pre-existing position. So I'll pause there. Andrew, there are a few points about green, blue and staff morale in Grantham you wanted to talk to.
I'll do the staff morale. I think Tracy Pilcher, looking at the comments, might pick up the UTC diagnostics bit. I mean, staff morale across the trust is clearly an issue at the best of times. We are a trust in double special measures, so staff morale is clearly an issue for us. Our staff survey results last October were an improvement on the past, although that started from quite a low baseline. And it's hard to generalise about staff morale. I spend a lot of my time out and about, so I was at Pilgrim on Monday and at Grantham. I was at Lincoln today, I'm at Pilgrim again tomorrow. What was interesting when we announced what we were doing and I was at Grantham, more than one member of staff came up to me to say, we don't agree with these changes Andrew, we just want to be left alone, we just want to do what we've always done in the way that we've done it. I cannot guarantee that in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, that we can leave things as they are for people to do what they want to do. That's not to say we won't work with our staff about how can we help them with any uncertainties that we've got. We've made assurances about there's no job losses, we've made assurances about their financial position, we've made assurances about travel time and flexibility and all of those things. So just to reassure councillor Whittington, absolutely staff morale matters. What I can't do is just agree that we will do everything that the staff would want us to do. That then leaves me with the issue of, well, what are we going to do then about people who've got cancer? What are we going to do about long waits for diagnostics or surgery? What are we going to do about infection prevention and control and prevent transmission of Covid? So it's difficult. It's a balancing position that we've had to take. The restoration of our services is not just about Grantham, it's about the county of Lincolnshire, it's about what happens on all of our sites and therefore staff morale is a whole trust issue. Just to give a slight counter, I also meet many, many staff who are very enthused about some of the changes that they've had to make, have relished the opportunity. Again, that's not all staff, but it's a number who have really put their shoulder to the wheel, making significant changes for us. And as I think I've done already, I just commend those actions. So Chair, I'll stop at that point and hand over to Tracy on the diagnostic bit, I think it was.
Yeah, thanks Andrew. So just to clarify that point. So if they're accessing services through the UTC, the X-ray radiology kind of services are connected to the UTC, they won't be used by the rest of the site, so it is completely zoned off from the rest of the site. The staff working in that X-ray department will not be working in the other areas of the site. So there is a really strong focus on the IPC and I think Andrew has identified, we're trying to maximise the service offer through the UTC. So we're working very closely to make sure same-day emergency care services are provided, the UTC is looking at the types of services that we'll deliver through the UTC, but it's also connected into that broader integrated urgent care office. So it is part of the 111 seamless clinical assessment service, moving into booked appointments. So that is an additionality that will be offered for patients across Grantham, that we'll be able to look at booked appointments for them. And then also, we have been working over the past three months about increasing our home visiting service as an organisation. And again, what we will try to do as much as possible is ensure that we can treat patients at home if at all. And we have seen quite an increase in our home visiting and capacity and activity for home visiting. So it isn't a service on its own, it's a wraparound service where we're hoping that we'll be able to meet the majority of those same-day urgent care requirements for the population of Grantham.
Thank you Tracy. I'm very conscious of the time and I know that John Turner has to be away for half past 12. I have got a number of speakers and I am going to close the debate down after this point as I have a number of questions myself. Councillor Whittington, you've had your two questions, but would you like to come back on anything if it's relatively quick?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think in the interest of time, please move on to allow the people to speak, thank you.
Thank you for that councillor Whittington. In which case I'd like to move on to Dr Wookiee please. Dr Wookiee, your microphone's not on.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes.
Yeah, thank you. My questions are really, I think mainly to Andrew about the green and the blue, and in particular the green proposals. And I think HealthWatch approach is that we are in a totally unprecedented and emergency situation at the moment in the health service everywhere and certainly in Lincolnshire as well. And the decisions have to be made, and we assume they're being made on a temporary basis. They may not, probably won't, be necessarily the plan for future, but we are in a position where we have a large number of patients who are not Covid patients, whose treatment is being delayed, not least cancer patients. And as such, I think the proposal to create a separate green site at Grantham rather than a mixed site somewhere else is the correct approach for the immediate future. But I do have some queries about the details of how this is going to operate. You've mentioned a bit about the diagnostics between the two, but there is also an ambulatory day care assessment centre to operate as part of the blue. And later on, it is mentioned about an inpatient rehabilitation unit at Grantham for people who have had treatment elsewhere in Lincolnshire. And I'm not quite sure how those two facilities are going to blur the distinction between green and blue. If this is going to work, green have got to be 100% safe and free of Covid. And I'm not quite sure how that would work there. There is also an issue of transport for patients who will be having elective surgery at Grantham, who are coming in particular from the east coast. I live in Horn Castle, it takes at least an hour, sometimes more, on my regular trips to Grantham station. It will be another half hour, somebody coming from Skegness or the coast. That is a long way and not everybody can make their own transport or get there. So there are going to have to be some special arrangements for that. It's mentioned, but it's not really covered as what is actually going to happen. The other thing is regarding the diagnostic liaison between the three main hospital sites. You could have a situation where a patient was, had their build-up of treatments and diagnostics at Boston, they might then be admitted to the green section at Grantham as an elective surgery patient. Something might go wrong and it does occasionally for elective surgical patients, and they might find themselves then transferred to Lincoln and having actually been involved in all three sites while they're being treated for a single condition. And I'm just not quite sure how that is going to work and whether the diagnostic test exchange results are going to be efficient between the three sites. So those are just some examples of problems which I'm sure Andrew will tell us hopefully they've been working on, but it would be good to hear his explanation. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you Brian. I mean, your principal point there about we've got to keep the green and blue separate, absolutely agree with that. The ambulatory care part of the UTC is part of the blue bit, not the green bit, and that will have to be kept separate. And I think Tracy's mentioned about same-day emergency care and the ambulatory bit and the UTC. Apologies if I've just put words in her mouth that she didn't say. The rehabilitation unit does get a mention in the paper, you're right. We're talking about potentially towards September, October time, that they will be patients with a very clear green status who've completed their acute episode at Lincoln and or Boston, that we would look to, I suppose, transfer back to Grantham if that's convenient for them and is appropriate. But again, we would have to be really, really clear before doing that about their green status and the staff who've been treating them. At the moment, that looks like it could be a 15-bed part of that, but details being worked up. Your point about shunting patients about, absolutely, we don't want to be shunting patients about between different sites. We are in unusual circumstances of needing to try and keep that green and blue separation. We are in unusual circumstances of needing to try and keep that green and blue separation. Having signed off at the board, the why and the what, we are still working up some of the real nitty-gritty detail of, well, what's the standard operating procedure of this? What's some of those scenarios that we will work through? And at this very moment, people are working up some of that. And that includes transport, there are existing arrangements for transport in the NHS. We've also been running chemotherapy for some time at Grantham during the Covid period. I've seen a number of comments from patients about the distance, not negative comments, but about the, I suppose, satisfaction that they've got that we're able to offer an appointment when they didn't think they were going to get one. It's in a nice facility they can get at, they can park for free, and they will put up with some of that transport. That does not apply to everyone, so we've both got to ensure the NHS transport requirements are in place, but we also recognise we may have to put in place some additional transport for people who cannot make their appointment or their surgery. So thank you, Chair, thank you Brian.
Thank you Brian, did you want to come back quickly?
Only to ask Andrew whether they would keep everyone informed. I know at the moment it's very early days and they're obviously working on these problems, but if they've taken them away and come back with an operating model, it's very easy to have a broad brush, but when you get down to the details, that's where the devil is.
Yeah, absolutely, that's why we're talking to all of our partners, it's why at our board last week, the board insisted on wanting a written update at every board meeting in public from here on in. And it's also why we had not worked up all of the detail before it went to our board, because if we'd done that, I'm sure there'd have been some accusations that we didn't give other people a chance to maybe suggest some better proposals or solutions. So we're talking to our own people, we're talking to our own clinicians, we're talking to our partners in the NHS and beyond. All of those views will help us to get the implementation bit right over the coming weeks. So yes, assurance about keeping up the communication and the sharing of information, absolutely, including for Healthwatch, of course.
Thank you, of course.
Thank you Brian, thank you Andrew. Sorry, jumping back to councillor Woodland's question again, however, just reading in between the lines, I'm certainly not picked up on, it sounded to me like some surgeries could be directed to Grantham rather than will be. Can you assure us that the cancer surgery will take place at Grantham?
Yes, the overwhelming majority, that those patients that are clearly going to need level three intensive care, which we have at Pilgrim and at Lincoln, we would not be directing those patients to Grantham. But the absolute clear expectation is that other than those few exceptions, we use the opportunity of a green site to be able to plough through our cancer surgery.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Andrew. I'm acutely aware that we're now at quarter past twelve and in fifteen minutes' time our speakers will need to leave, therefore I'm going to make the suggestion that we move agenda item seven for our next meeting, because I think this is such a substantive item. I'd like to now bring in councillor Woodlift, please.
Councillor Woodlift, are you there, please? Yes, thank you Chairman. Turn my camera on, yeah. Good. Thank you Chairman, I've got two questions in line with your ruling. The first one is, what impact has or have, how's the multiple occupation, HMOs, had in the transmission of the virus? Or have the cases in care homes been the cause of the figures in Boston? That's the first question, can that be answered?
I will just point out councillor Woodlift, that although I'm sure our colleagues will do their best to answer it, care homes does not fall under our remit under normal circumstances.
No, but it comes into the question, doesn't it, on page twenty-six?
It certainly does, that's what I've said under this exception, I will allow if our speakers cannot.
Right, so you talked about Boston being one of the more densely populated areas and has a high proportion of more deprived areas in county, urbanisation deprivation associated with statistically higher rates of mortality. Obviously, higher rates of mortality might well be linked with where people live, right? And HMOs and care homes are places where people live in close proximity. And we know nationally that care homes have been hit very badly by this. Do you want me to continue or not?
Yes, certainly you can continue, and then if you can allow our speakers to answer, please councillor Woodlift, because we do have others that wish to speak, thank you.
Right, well, that's the first question. And the second one is, is there any evidence of non-British-born population not complying with HMP guidance and advice? You know, I'm a bit concerned about this question on page, this statement on page twenty-six, because some people could interpret that as being racist. That is a problem with that, you've got to be careful about what you write. So is there any, is there any evidence of non-British-born population not complying with HMP advice? And the police say, of course, that there's no significant increase in use of powers across Boston. So what data is there on the ethnic background in Boston of those who have contracted Covid-19? Is there any evidence of the non-British-born population not complying with HMP advice? And is that the two questions, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to answer those. Perhaps if Andy Fox is still on, Andy, you may wish to comment as well. So it's probably, oh gosh, maybe six weeks ago, something like that, that we got the data broken down by district area. Prior to that, the data we were receiving was only for Lincolnshire County as a whole. It's now broken down as available on a daily basis in relation to the district areas. What that clearly revealed at that time, when that data came out, is that, as I reported earlier, the proportion of cases in Boston or a council area wasn't only the highest in the county, it was significantly above the England average as well. The only other part of the county was South Holland that was above the Lincolnshire average. So that immediately raised questions in relation to what do we, what do we know, what might be happening for the population in Boston? So actually, I asked that very same question of our colleagues in the LRF, the resilience forum, what's going on here? And within the papers, so the bits that you've just quoted, was actually the advice that the Lincolnshire resilience forum offered us, which had three parts to it. Number one is that Boston has a combination of urbanisation and deprivation, and we know that the combination of those two factors is a factor in the county. So the commentary in the paper is a direct copy of the advice that we've received from public health. To my mind, it still actually raises the question that you raised, what do we actually know? All of those comments are what could be the cause, but we don't actually know what the cause of the higher rates in Boston are. So that is still remaining an important question for us and our public health colleagues.
Okay, Andrew, I think you'd like to pop in, and then Tracy, if you could pop in afterwards, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Again, excellent questions really. From a public health perspective, the issue of precisely what causes any population-level health effect to be higher in one area than another is always complex. So when we're dealing with any kind of population-level health effect like the higher rates in Boston, the answer is always going to be a multitude of different causal factors combining together. And some of the key ones, the ones that John's already referred to, would be deprivation and would be urban density in terms of living. We know that, and this links to the House of Multiple Occupation, a point that was also raised, because that is a more common dwelling type in areas of high deprivation. And certainly, we know that all those things correlate, they don't necessarily cause, they definitely correlate with a higher rate of, actually incidence of most conditions, certainly including Covid-19. So yeah, causality, causation is always harder to identify than correlation in any type of public health or epidemiology. So generally speaking, what happens is eventually we form a consensus on the overall balance that influence these things, and that will develop over time as more academic research is done. There won't be one single thing that we can point to necessarily that is the reason why Boston is higher. What I would say in terms of the care home situation is actually that, obviously, the key correlation between mortality and Covid-19 is age. It's a very simple point, it is worth restating again, that the mortality rate is far higher in the older population. So across the piece, we would expect to see clusters of mortality around older adults' dwellings and care homes particularly. Lincolnshire, though, has consistently had less, far less outbreaks and a lower mortality rate amongst the care home populations and other areas of the country, which is something that was referred to at the beginning. What I would say, it's early days, but we've just seen some emerging reports and studies being done that suggest actually Lincolnshire is the number one area in the country for less mortality than would be expected, given our care home population. So actually, something has gone very right in Lincolnshire compared to other areas, every death is still obviously tragic in these circumstances. And we'll be doing some additional research in public health to try and understand that we know, make sure we understand exactly what that is and we can carry that knowledge forward and hopefully help other areas as well with their future responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. I think you just very quickly would like to come in and state what you've mentioned in the chat for those that can't view the chat, please.
Pardon me? Yes, Chairman, you're asking me to speak?
No, councillor Woodlift, I'm asking Tracy to come back, please. She's put something in the chat, but obviously others may not be able to see that.
No, sorry, I think it's the wrong image. I was going to put in, there's an image of care home deaths across the county and then across the country, and it does, just to reiterate the point Andy was making about Lincolnshire having one of the lowest levels, so less than ten per thousand population, which is one of the lowest in the country in terms of deaths in care home settings.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Thank you councillor Woodlift. In which case, I've got two speakers, and if you can be very concise with it, please, because we've got all of about eight minutes. Okay, councillor Cebrie Brown, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Right, thank you. I know you like things to be concise, Mr Chairman, so what I'm about to say will be. Definition of temporary, we've heard from everyone on the Trust today that they all know and understand what, where we're coming from here, from Grantham. The definition of temporary is a change of use for a small period of time. You cannot say our A&E being closed for so long is a small period of time, and you cannot expect Grantham constituents to, Grantham people to expect that, because it's just, it's just worn thin. We've heard it so many times now. Now, there's been a suggestion this morning that, I can't get my camera on, sorry about this, there's been a suggestion this morning that the old maternity wing could be converted into the cancer wing. Now, if you don't want to do that, or you say you can't do that, because that has got separate indentities and everything to the hospital, surely you could use the old maternity wing then to open it up as A&E? Because Grantham town and Grantham area need an A&E department for 24/7 if we can, and we were promised it. You said you would return it. Now, Grantham people are very understandable, they understand things, we know and I would like to congratulate all of you on the way you've handled the pandemic. But to be perfectly honest, it, as I've said before, temporary closures wear thin, and they really do think they're never going to get their A&E back again. So please, could you do a U-turn, like the Prime Minister did yesterday, and make it possible for Grantham to keep an A&E facility somewhere? Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I'll bring in John Turner, would you like to respond? I think you've mainly alluded to this, and obviously it will form part of the acute services too, if you could perhaps come in and answer.
Yeah, I think I've probably said everything I can possibly say, Carl, in response to previous questions. I completely and utterly understand the point about temporary, whatever the precise definition is. I agree that, you know, we are certainly beyond a small period of time coming up, four years, that's understood, appreciate, and totally, totally get that. I would also say that, referring back to Healthy Conversation exercise last year, we were clear on what we thought the options were in relation to Grantham Hospital going forward. Those were based on the views of our senior clinicians in terms of how we could best construct services for the people of Grantham into the future. And clearly, we're not yet at a point of going out to public consultation on the options, which again, Carl, takes us back to my previous comments. But I do understand the point that councillor Cebrie Brown is making, thank you.
Thank you, John. I've got councillor Matthews very quickly, then I've got one question and I'll move to the proposals. Councillor Matthews, please.
Thank you, Chair. I've just received today an inquiry about a wound clinic in Orford which is being closed. Now, I didn't know we had a wound clinic in Orford, and I don't know if this is part of a wider programme, but it has created some anxiety amongst our elderly population, so I wonder if someone, Mads, okay, I believe she's left the meeting, but does anyone advise if this wound clinic is closing and if there are other things in the way that I don't know about? Thanks, Carl.
Do you want me to answer? So it would be helpful to have more information in relation to, we are redesigning what we call our lower limb service, so that includes leg ulcers, so just need to look into it. It's not a decision that we've made, so it might be that there is some change in service, but I'll look into it.
Thank you, councillor Matthews, you start to cover that from the moment.
Carl, I didn't hear you.
You didn't hear the answer?
No, I didn't hear what you said, I heard the answer.
I said that you're satisfied with the answer.
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you councillor Matthews, that's great. Okay, I've got one question, and that is, the item is not on the Lincolnshire acute services review, but the proposals for an urgent treatment centre in Grantham resemble the preferred options. Can you say when the consultation might begin on the acute services review itself?
No, I can't. What I can say is that the CCG is looking to progress this as quickly as we can. As I mentioned earlier, we have to go through a process with NHS England, referring back to one of the earlier points. Clearly, we are in a pandemic and we need to be mindful of what that means in terms of the ability to undertake an effective public consultation exercise. So I don't think it would be wise for me to say, to give a particular date at which we may be able to start, because it is subject to matters which are outside my direct control. But I can commit to the committee that the CCG is pushing this as hard as we can with NHS England. The work that we have to do to get authorisation...
The work that we have to do to get authorisation from NHS England to go to public consultation is considerable. There's a huge amount of detail that we have to put together, and we can only do that in partnership with our colleagues in ULHT and LCHS as well. So we're all working hard to complete that exercise whilst obviously dealing with all of the other matters that the committee's been considering this morning. So I can absolutely give a commitment that we are seeking to progress this as quickly as we can. I acknowledge that this has been hanging around for far too long. I understand everybody's frustrations around that, and of course, we'll keep the committee informed as and when things become clearer in terms of that timescale.
Thank you. In which case, I'd like to now move to the proposals. I would like to propose that we welcome the return of the 24/7 walk-in access to care at Grantham, along with the elective and planned treatments, but that we also put on record the committee's concerns that the restoration plan will have a significant impact on patients throughout Lincolnshire in terms of travel from their local to other sites and the downgrading of Grantham A and E. I'd also like to propose that we seek regular updates on the progress of the restoration plan for ULHT, including the impacts on patients for travelling to different sites, and to record the committee's view that full public consultation on the Lincolnshire Acute Services Review options should take place as soon as possible, and to further write to the Right Honourable Matt Hancock, MB, who is the Secretary of State for Health and Social Care, expressing the committee's concerns which have been raised today as an indication of the committee's position and the actions in the future. Councillor Woodland, you'd like to come in?
May I second Chair, may I second Chairman?
Okay, councillor Roshi, you have seconds? Thank you. In which case, I will put this motion to the vote. Trina will call out the names of members of the committee and ask them to indicate if they are for, against, or abstaining. Please remember to turn on your microphone just before you vote and to turn it off immediately after. Trina, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Carl Macy?
Four.
Councillor Chris Brewer.
Please just second it.
Four.
Four. Councillor Matthew Fido?
Four.
Four.
Councillor Kendrick?
Four.
Councillor Matthews?
Four.
Councillor Renshaw?
Four.
Councillor Whittington?
Four.
Councillor Woodland?
Four.
Councillor Woodliffe?
Four.
Councillor Bilton? Councillor Bilton?
Four.
Right. Mrs Harrison?
Four.
Councillor Barker-Milan?
Four.
Councillor Cebrie Brown?
Four.
And councillor Mrs White?
Four.
Unanimous then, Chairman.
Thank you. That's been carried unanimously, and I'd like to thank our speakers for the presentation today, and we look forward to seeing you on our next meeting. In which case, I'd now like to move on to agenda item eight, as we've already discussed. Agenda item seven will now have to be deferred until our next meeting, which I think is only rightly so, seeing how substantive the item was. So thank you, our speakers, and we'll go on to agenda item eight, the work programme. Simon.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. This, this paper begins on page 149 of the agenda pack and continues on to page 157. Usually, the committee reviews its work programme at the beginning of each meeting. On this occasion, it's slightly different, because given the impact of three meetings during March, April, and May not having taken place, the committee is asked to prioritise items in terms of high priority, medium priority, where they're not necessarily things that the committee needs to deal with, and low priority. And there is a proposal, once the committee has accepted those, to consider whether the, any or all of the items in the low priority box might be removed from the work programme. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Renshaw, I do believe you wanted to come in on this item as well.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, it's one of the medium aspects, and it's about the undiagnosed blood pressure and other issues. I personally think that this is an opportunity for, for us to put in things which have emerged during the COVID crisis. In other words, during the COVID crisis, we've had less alcohol consumption, which has resulted in lower admissions to A and E, we've had less air pollution, we've had more exercising, less poverty-related conditions, although that's probably debatable, and diets and starvation have come as emerging issues. And if some of those issues are included in a national recovery programme, I think it'd be an opportunity for this committee to consider them. Okay?
Okay, thank you, councillor Renshaw, I think Simon's picked off on that. Yeah.
Yes, Chairman.
Yeah. Okay, so in which case, I'm going to propose that we agree the priorities for the committee's future work programme based on the proposed high, medium, and low priority list set out on this report, and to consider whether all, oh, sorry, to consider whether any or all of the items identified in this report as low priority should be removed from the committee's work programme for now. Do I have a second to that proposal, and do we feel that we need to be looking to remove the low priorities, Andy?
I'll second that. I'll second that, if I may, Chairman, and I think Trina.
Councillor, you're breaking up, I'm afraid.
Stand, because we're in such uncertain times, it's going to have to be a moving face like it's our second.
You were very unclear on there, I'm afraid, Chris, we couldn't hear you at all. Could you just repeat, sorry?
I'm sorry, I just second him saying because of the current emergency, it's almost certain to be a bit of a moving face, but I'll second that, Chairman, yes.
That's helpful, thank you very much. In which case, I think we'll be able to take this on consensus. Does anyone dissent from the proposal? No, in which case, thank you, that's carried, and thank you all very much for your attendance in today's meeting. It was very useful, thank you. If you'd all now like to press the red button to hang up, that would be helpful, thank you.